Good Democrats, now who are they to say who's a good Democrat and who's not a good Democrat? So, this would do away with bosses and bring about a much better city government, in my opinion, in the long run, and it would open it up to everybody that's a voter, not just a small group of people that identify with a certain party.
Just one point you brought up, Bruce. I don't think we've been really able to measure the impact upon military yet, because the folks, you know, we had a May primary, there's plenty of time now to get a ballot, and I think that was the issue before, get a primary and less than 60 days later. So, I don't think we've been able to measure that yet. I see what you're saying on your first two points, but I think just as a point of clarification, we don't know how that's going to affect the military. We do know that they're all going to receive a complete ballot, however.
Thank you. Anyone else in the committee? Councilwoman Hope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of things that, you know, that I saw as we went through this primary, and is that the voters out there really aren't interested. They don't really care about voting in a primary. It's bec- and it's become apparent, and if you go back through and you look at the voting numbers and look at a lot of the people that have voted in your wards and in the city of Akron, that number keeps going down regardless of, I mean, we could, we could put the primary in any month you want to. I don't think voters are really interested in primary. I don't think voters are interested in too much of an election per se unless there's really something huge there. This past primary, we, we paid for the entire primary because we were the only ones in there, and we told this to our voters that we were going to save money by doing it. Well, we sure didn't do that. We also didn't have a very good turnout. We were looking for a larger turnout in May because they were saying that the numbers were going to be there and we were going to have a much better turnout, and we didn't do that. And then in Ward Six, I looked at the numbers and the, and the number of people that voted in Ward Six, it was 10.3 percent of the voters voted in that primary. And I, I believe that, I'm not sure if I'm exact, but for the city of Akron, we were somewhere around maybe 18 to 20 percent, right in that range. That is very, very poor. And, you know, there, again, that just shows that there is no interest, that people don't want to take the time, they don't like, we've even got, you know, you can, you can do a mail-in ballot, and we still ended up in Ward Six with 10.3 percent. I don't know. The money expended, the time expended, the amount of money and time that is expended for people that are in the primary and going out and purchasing items, signs, and, you know, space in the newspapers, on the radio, and everything else, I think it's a big waste of time and money. As a matter of fact, I think fundraising is a big waste of time and money. I think if, if you want to hold a, an office, I think that maybe you should put up your own money and forget about asking people to, you know, make it so that you can go in and earn it. I haven't had a fundraiser for a number of years and didn't this time either. I, I did a couple of times and I just, I just think it's, it's something that is, is not necessary. The Democratic Party right now, I know Mr. Fusco said about the Democratic Party, I think the Democratic Party is a shadow of what it used to be. It, it does not stand for what it did whenever, whenever I first became a Democrat at, at the age of 18. My father was a Democrat, and he was a Democrat because he was a union member, and I was a Democrat because I became a union member. And, and the Democratic Party used to be and stand for unions. Now they stand for unions in election year, and that's pretty much about what it is. You don't see or hear about Democrats doing anything for the unions or for the working people until it comes up to an election year, and I, I think that's a shame. And one last point, I think, there was one last item that Mr. Kilby mentioned a couple of times, and I think it was wrong, and I don't think he realized it, but he said one of the things is, is that, you know, we're all Democrats. No, we're not. I am no longer a Democrat. I do not agree or will side with or be a part of the Democratic Party any longer. I cannot go on and pretend to be a Democrat, because I, I just can't do it. The Democratic Party, like I said, is a shadow of itself, and, you know, so if there's 13 members of council, unless somebody else comes forward, there's only 12 Democrats on there right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I will say, correct myself, we're all elected as Democrats, and I, I still consider myself a Democrat, but this Summit County Democratic Party is a sham. It's run by a few political bosses. When I first got involved in politics, people used to, used to have competitive races for precinct committee people. Now you can't even get people who want to be a Democratic precinct committee person. Used to be, at the Board of Elections, they'd ask the ward councilman if he knew somebody that wanted to be a PC in a particular precinct. Then the political bosses took that power away from council and decided who they're going to put in there. So that's, that's what the Summit County Democratic Party has become. Bossism, self-serving, and I don't, I don't see, you know, these aren't really what I consider Democrats, they're corporate Democrats. They serve the moneyed interests, not the people of Summit County. Now, there are some differences at the state and local level, and that's why I'm still a Democrat, but hardly anybody has partisan politics left here, just because, like Mr. Hope says, 10 percent of the people decided who the councilperson's going to be in Ward Six? Now that's Democratic? That's not a democratic system. I mean, anybody can go in there and say, "I want to change parties," but they don't do it. That's the reality of the situation. So, I think the time has come to face reality that we need to open up our political system to all voters, and that's what this would do. In November, we're going to have an election, anybody can run. You don't have to walk, anybody can vote. You don't have to go in there and say, "Well, I'm this party or that party," and what we have is a sham. This is, this election, we spent all this money in November, we all know who's going to win. All the Democratic nominees are going to win. So, we need to change the system, and as far as like, we haven't dealt with this. We were talking about it, but we haven't, the voters haven't dealt with this. We, we dealt with it last year, and it was voted down, but I'm bringing it back in because I think now that we have seen what happened with the charter change we did make, that time has come to do something different. And you want to save money? This would save serious money, because we're going to eliminate the primary completely. This is going to increase participation drastically, because it's always the general election where most people vote, and those are the voters that should decide who sits in these seats, not a bunch of political bosses.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the committee? Councilwoman Imobian?
I do believe that everything I want to say has been said, but I would just recap most of the points that I wanted to make. I, I think you realize that we won't have the votes to pass this, but the points that have been made only confirm the reasons why we need to have an unpartisan election. It is clear that folks are not voting, and any way we can open up voting for all of our citizens, I think is critically important. And I have found, even in Ward Eight, where you used to have a large Republican contingency, most of the folks in Ward Eight are independents. And you will find lots of folks in this city who are that way because they don't agree with either party. And as has been indicated, even before people get to the point of voting, the information to educate the voters happens during your campaigning. There's nothing about an unpartisan election that would prevent you from putting that you are a Democrat or a Republican on your literature or on your signs or what have you. So, all of the reasons that have been given, I think, would strongly support this measure. However, I don't think we have the will to pass it. So, I, I certainly would support it. It makes sense to me to just forego the primary altogether, go straight to a general election where everybody can participate. And then when I, because I'm not taking a vote or even a count of how many cities in the state of Ohio have nonpartisan elections, and you just made me aware, and I never paid much attention to it, but I guess Cleveland is nonpartisan, and there are probably some other large, major cities that are nonpartisan. And I see no reason why we should continue the route we're going, because the turnout for the May primary was abysmal. It was below anything people could imagine. It did not increase anything, and we, and we can say that it's because of the newness of it. After all the campaigning about it, people just weren't interested. They just weren't interested. They didn't believe it was going to make a difference, and I certainly welcome any competition, anytime I'm running, with anyone, whether you're Republican, independent, doesn't matter. If you put your name on the ballot and go out and do the real work to sell yourself, and the voters vote you in, I think you deserve to be here. I have no problem with that at all. So, I would be truly in favor of something like this. Thank you.
Any other members of the committee, anything else? Okay, I have two, I'm going to go to Councilman Neal, and then over to Councilman Kammer, and then I have your Councilwoman. And Councilman Swirsky, thank you.
Madam Chair, the President would like to have a word, too, at some point.
Oh, I apologize, my head didn't go up that far.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think if we go back and we look at the healthy discussion that we had when we were looking at the two proposals that were brought before us, we'll find that, yes, the argument was, wanted to increase voter turnout, wanted to save money, that's what was promoted to the citizens of Akron, as well as the military vote. I appreciate Councilman Kilby bringing this back before us, while we all have fresh institutional knowledge of the history that this, all the main reasons that the administration pushed this, because it did not, through the traditional, regular process, there weren't the votes to get it out of council. Were wrong, they were flawed. And so, you know, one thing that concerns me that I keep hearing is Democrat, Democrat, Democrat. When I, and I said this when we were looking at this the first time, yes, I may be elected as a Democrat, but when we're here, we're supposed to do what's best for the citizens of Akron. The citizens of Akron. What's best for the citizens of Akron? Do away with the primary. It, it doesn't just save money, eliminates the cost totally. We're pushing, as our main initiative, to be equitable and inclusive. The primary is anything but inclusive or equitable. It discriminates against the majority of the voters of this city because they cannot participate. You know, I, I think we have to be very careful, because if I was someone watching or listening or sitting in the audience, and I heard people talking about doing what's best for Democrats and not what's best for the citizens of Akron, I would be seriously concerned. Because let's look, the Elevate Akron Report came out. Who was in leadership the whole time that this report says that 30 percent of our population has been disenfranchised, excluded from economic opportunity? Democrats were in charge. The, the challenges that this city faces, who's been in leadership? Our party. And I think part of the problem is, is that people bring the politics from campaigning into this horseshoe and make political decisions, rather than using the political process to do what's best for the citizens of Akron. And there is a difference, folks. So, when we look at, our school board members were nonpartisan, our judges, I believe that what's best is, as we said before, let the citizens decide. Let's put the same vigor behind educating them as was done when it said that it was going to save money and increase the vote, which neither happened. Neither happened. Educating them that we're doing this because it's going to eliminate the cost altogether, and it will not exclude anyone from having a say on who's going to be their representative. Because we can look at every election, the decision is made in a democratic primary. I was kind of shocked. I got a call from the Democratic Chair, I think on Thursday, before the legislation came out, asking me if, if I had anything to do with it, and I said, "Well, no, but I tell you what, if it comes, I'm going to support it." But that even concerned me. Why would I get a call from the Democratic Chair trying to influence a vote on an issue? That seriously concerns me. So, you know, I think if this city is, if we are serious about being, creating transparent, inclusive, equitable opportunity for all, we will quit protecting two special interest groups, which are the Democratic Party and the Republican Party. They can still, we can still, anybody can still put their information in their literature, but let's do what's best for the city, save that cost, be true to our new position about being an equitable and inclusive city, and allow everyone to participate in the election and not protecting any one special group. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I will now go to Councilman Kammer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I remember last year when the two proposals came to council, and obviously, I favored the administration proposal, moving the primary from September to May. I also always stand here and I never want to silence the citizens of Akron or the voters, and I always want to support a proposed charter amendat- amendment, sorry. I noticed when I was out campaigning this, this time, a couple of months ago, and going door to door, I've, I've had a lot of conversations with folks, and Republicans and Democrats and independents, and the party line topic really came up. You know, a lot of people, they were Republicans, they were concerned about switching parties to vote for me. Nonpartisans were really concerned about declaring a party in the May primary. So I had a lot of that conversation. So, how I look at this is, obviously, I didn't support this last year because I supported the other charter amendment, and I don't look at, there's nothing else that's being brought in to counter this or another proposal, and like I said, what I just said a few seconds ago, is I'll never try to silence the voters, I'll leave it up to them to decide, and I will probably support this piece to be put on the ballot for November. And then, moving forward, we'll have our answer here in the city of Akron. Does the voter support a nonpartisan election, or do they support a primary that will be held in May? So, we can put this to bet, that's how I look at it, but I will support this moving forward. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And now I have Councilwoman Simps, and then I have Councilman Swirsky.
I'm just, in hindsight, thinking about what your legislation is bringing forth, I really don't believe there's nonpartisan elections for someone who came from a court system and worked for several judges. Although they're nonpartisan races, you can tell party affiliation just based off of their literature alone. So, would it really be nonpartisan? What I think would work for me is something I've spoken to our new Secretary of State about, is making sure those independent voters, like Mr. Kammer said, who don't want to declare a party, I think that should be the focus. If they can go in and get a ballot and actually vote for who they want to vote for and not have to declare a party, I think that's the win for us here. You know, I get a little hesitant about nonpartisan stuff now, just because of what's going on in Washington. We have someone who really isn't Republican, and he's the president. We have people who really say they're Rs. and they're Ds., and Ds. were Rs. So, I think we sort of kind of have to watch what we're doing as it relates to the nonpartisan clause, and if they're really nonpartisan, but I think if we really want to engage our voters and try to get people to actually show up to vote, we need to focus on our independent voters, our nonpartisan voters who don't want to declare a party. They should be allowed to vote for whomever they want without declaring a party, and I think that's something that I would definitely support here on out. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Simps. Councilman Swirsky?
Well, sorry, I think at this point, it's a little premature.
Rich, turn your microphone on.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It's a little premature. I haven't heard a kind of more comprehensive evaluation of the primary, so I've heard some different things thrown out, but to me, it's kind of premature to write it off. And I do, from the bottom of my heart, believe that citizens need to have basic information about the political affiliation and the identity, political identity of those that they're voting for. And especially, we're not really a fortress Akron, we're operating in a national setting, in a global economy, and I do not want to vote for people unwittingly, and I wouldn't want people in my ward to vote unwittingly for someone who supports policies that deny climate change, that go backwards on fairness in immigration, that oppose minimum wage policies, or that oppose a woman's right to choose. Now, it's true that problems can be fixed by Democrats and Republicans, but we are an incubator of political involvement, of political leadership, and I think we want to make sure that the citizens have as much information as they can about who lines up with who. And especially in the era of Donald Trump, I would not want to, I personally would not want to vote for a Trump supporter, or someone who agrees with Trump on climate change, immigration, minimum wage, all of those things. So, I don't see the value of taking away information from people about some of the basic identity or the basic affiliations people have in a real political world. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I have, the President would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of concerns that I have, one being an African-American candidate, elected official. Again, and we've heard it said around the horseshoe many times, again, taking information away from voters. In the absence of party affiliation, sometimes, you know, voters will have to rely on cues, and some of those cues are related to ethnicity, and it could be ethnicity simply by a candidate's last name. So, for me, that does bring forth some concerns and some issues. Also, just in the way that this particular ordinance is rolled up, you just have to have 50 signatures from anybody in the city of Akron, even if they're registered. You know, if I'm running in Ward Three, and someone else wants to run in Ward Three, and if they just need 50 signatures throughout the city, I find some issues with that, and that's just how it's rolled up. And again, also just have issues with the fact that we cannot limit nominations, you know. With nonpartisan elections, we open ourselves up to the ability to literally have maybe 40 people running for one seat. And so, again, I think that makes it more difficult to inform voters and really letting voters know as much information as they need to know about the candidates. And so, I think, for me, timing is everything, and so I'm not so sure if this piece is really about the voters, or if it's more so about the fact that there's some that might be upset about the last results of the primary.
Councilman Kilby, and then?
Well, I supported this before the results of the last primary, and I still support it. As far as information, what information do people get from a partisan primary, except, hey, I'm a great guy? They put out their campaign literature promoting themselves. Well, you're still going to have candidates running a campaign, they can say what they believe in, they can say what party they associate with. So, I don't see this where there's less information. In fact, there's going to be more information, and it's going to open up the political process to all voters, not just a real select group of people where it's easy to game the system for partisan reasons. And that's, you know, the way I look at it. It's just, time has come to do away with this here corrupt system in this city of having partisan elections. It's a sham.
Okay.
It's just, we need to change it, and there's two ways of getting this on the ballot. We can get 10 votes on this council to put it on the ballot in November, or we can just do it the way the mayor did his last year when he couldn't get to 10 votes on this council, take it to the people with the initiative. So whatever it takes, we can do it the easy way or the hard way, but the people should have a say in who can vote, for their mayor and their council people, and they don't have that choice right now. That's why this is, system we have is extremely undemocratic, and it needs to change.
Thank you. Councilman Neal?
Madam Chair, again, I want to stress, when we're elected, are we elected to do what's best for a party? Are we elected to do what's best for the citizens of Akron? All the arguments are about party, you know, and you could take out Democrat or Republican. At one time, you could put in the word, word "black," Italian, Catholic, Jewish. You could use those words for reasons why people didn't want certain people to be able to participate in a process. Remember, we're talking, this city is, is trying to present itself as a welcoming city, an inclusive city, an equitable city. But what we're talking about, when we talk about the primary, it excludes people. And again, you try to, you want to say that you don't want anybody that's not Republican. You know what? When you look through, it's been partisan politics that was a part of the Reconstruction period. It wasn't independents. It was party politics that created Reconstruction, that used the black community, Madam President, my colleagues on council, members of the audience who we had a conversation about, with, who used the, the black community for party gain. Historically, it's been the party- Historically, it's been the parties that have, did the independents gerrymander the districts? Party politics. Again, it's because we can't, we do what's best for what's best for a party rather than what's best for the city. And it was really shameful because it was the party. Go back and look at the literature that went out. We need to do what's best for the citizens of Akron. You have the history of this, of this nation, on how party politics has basically pimped certain communities for their gain. And you have the local politics. Again, that Elevate Akron report talked about the disenfranchisement of the black community, all under Democratic rule. All under Democratic rule. Look at how we built our schools, all under Democratic leadership. And it's as equitable as inequitable could be. Folks, this is a chance to let people be able to participate in the process. The parties will still have an opportunity to put their, everybody still have an opportunity to put their literature on, their campaign literature, have their campaigns and run them the way they want to run. But let me ask you this, for everyone who said, "Let the people decide" last time, let the people decide. My colleague, Councilman Kammer, said, "The last time was because we had two pieces that came in." This is the only piece. This is the only piece that's before us, and we have the historical, the recent history that shows it did not save money, it did not increase voter turnout. And I am extremely concerned, as we talk about being an equitable, inclusive, and transparent city, with the conversation that's taking place around the horseshoe, because everything we're talking about is to keep, to make us less inclusive, less equitable. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, I have a couple people who still want to speak. Councilwoman Imobian, the Councilman Hope, and Councilman Fusco. And this is what I'm going to ask. I'm hearing repetitive conversation here, and I know that this is a piece that is just coming before us. But if we could keep our comments, if we've already made it, I heard it, so if we have something to add to a comment, I think that would be good.
Well, I wanted to call the question personally, but since you recognize the other hands, I guess they need to go before I call the question.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Hope?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think Mrs. Imobian and Mr. Neal, you know, both, and Councilwoman Samples brought in the fact about the independent voters out there, and how important it is to get them to come out and be active in the voting process and become involved in the primary. But, you know, the reason that a lot of the people are independents is because they haven't voted in the primary.
I wanted to eliminate the primary.
Excuse me?
But, but, but our numbers of independents have grown immensely in the last few years at, with, if you look at the numbers at the Board of Elections, and I know that it's not by accident, it's just that people, again, are not interested. I'll go back to originally when I ran, and the Democratic count in Ward Six, I know, was about four to one over the Republican Party. And today, there's only a few hundred registered voters as far as the difference between Democratic and Republicans in Ward Six. And a lot of it has to do with the numbers in the Democratic Party dropping because the Republican Party hasn't grown that much in Ward Six. It's pretty much the same as what it was almost eight years ago. The Democratic Party has dropped quite a number to get down to that point, and the independent registration has grown by great leaps. So, again, I think looking at this and establishing that the primary is not something that anybody is interested in anymore, and that giving us an opportunity, as Mr. Kammer said, you know, let the voter decide as to what they want and what they don't want. And that's what we're here for, like Mr. Neal said. We're here to make sure that we do what is good for the citizens of Akron and what they decide that they want to do. They decided that they had us come down here to represent them. And if we have something, a question come before us to be put out there for them to decide, I think that's what we should be doing. So, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Fusco?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Mr. Kilby, was this prepared by the Law Department?
No.
No, it wasn't. Did the Law Department weigh in in terms of its constitutionality?
No.
No? Okay.
I didn't ask their opinion, I just brought it in.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, that's a problem. The, um...
It doesn't make a lot of sense, first off.
In terms of bosses, in terms of...
Please, let's let Ms. Councilman Fusco have her floor.
Obviously, this is partisan conversation. In terms of bosses, I do know that the precinct committee members voted on the endorsement process, as well as, full disclosure, the party leadership, but the precinct committee people also voted within the Ward District areas. The, and in terms of Republicans and monikers and so on, so forth, yeah, I'm proud to be a Democrat, and I'll stand up and say that. I've been my entire life. Sometimes, I'm not happy with the Democratic Party, but most of the time, I can tell you I am. And especially whenever we talk about being a welcoming city, and what happens in Washington, DC, and the votes we make whenever we're here voting on a resolution, telling Washington, DC about the welcoming, and so on, so forth. Yeah, I think that really helps voters whenever they know which team you're on, bottom line on that one. And in terms of Mr., going to use Mr. Kilby's words, in terms of "the hard way." Well, last year, the issue that got on the ballot was done by getting signatures and obtaining signatures.
Okay, so did they?
The hard way. So, therefore, it just seems, you know, full disclosure here, it just, that's the way it was done last year. So, we did not put it on the ballot. And the thing of it is, is there was overabundance of signatures that were obtained, overabundance, and there wasn't even an option then. There wasn't a second piece or what have you that was on the ballot because the other team couldn't get the signatures. I think the voters spoke then. So, and there's, we don't have enough data, I feel, in terms of, you know, measuring elections, past performances, just based on one election. You just can't do that. There's one thing that cannot be disputed. You can dispute the cost, the numbers, blah, 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 but the one thing you can't dispute is that the reason why that was proposed was due to the fact that it complied with state, federal law. That's the bottom line in terms of overseas voters, and that was one of the main driving forces. So, with that, I'm going to make a...
I'd like to have him finish, and then I'd be more than...
I'd like to make a motion that we, that we refer this item. It's not even, we don't even know if it's legal or not.
Correct. Okay, so I've heard that motion. What is your comment, Councilman Kilby?
Oh, I just want to reiterate what my colleague Fusco said. I am a proud Democrat, too. I identify with the Democratic Party on national and state issues. What does the Summer County Democratic Party stand for? Can anybody tell me?
Well, I think we should...
Nothing.
I think we should...
Okay, except pushing their candidates and controlling the city government.
I want to stick to the piece that's in front of us. I've had, actually, I would like to make a comment now. And then, I've had two people, Councilwoman Imobian, Councilman Fusco, make motions that I would like to go back to. My comment is, I want to very clear why I supported, in the past, I truly believed, from what was told to us, that we were not in compliance, and this had to do with anyone overseas. To me, that was a disservice. I, if it saved money, terrific. If more people turned out, great. But I, I believe that all people should be represented. I also remember here on council, a lot of people that did not want this to be put, that to have that put on the ballot. And that was, that was very discerning to me. And when I spoke to people, I said, you know, "I believe you should always have the right to vote." Knowing now that this did not go as was stated by you, Councilman Kilby, this did not go through the Law Department, I personally believe that time is needed here so that it can go through the proper channels, so that it has what's, if this is what you want, that it is within our legal venue that we can present it and have it be voted on. I believe that's the correct thing to do. I, I, I'm sorry that in so many places, we got off topic, that we, but I believe that everyone should have a chance to speak. And whether you like it or not, right now, I think we have come to the time where we take it to a vote.
Can I say something?
And, no, I think right now, we're going to vote, Councilman Kilby. So, I have a motion. Do you agree with the motion? I have a motion, and I know that you had said, Councilwoman Imobian, you may go ahead and say your motion, if you like.
No, I will withdraw my motion as long as we will refer this item to the Law Department to be drafted in the formal format for a vote hopefully next week.
Okay, so, I have a motion to refer this from Councilman Fusco. Would you second that motion? Is that what I'm hearing, Councilwoman Imobian?
Yeah, I would second it as long as...
And I have a second.
Are you willing to admit, yeah, okay.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing and seeing none, this motion will be referred. Okay, this ordinance will be referred to be looked at by the Law Department and brought back before us at what other given time. Okay, is there anything else to come before council, or this committee? Hearing and seeing none, we are adjourned.
... numbers present. Do you have a motion to accept the minutes? Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We have one old item, item number one from last week, an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 4292018, creating, establishing, recognizing departments, offices, bureaus, divisions, positions in the classified service of the city of Akron, requiring that only budgeted funded positions be filled and declaring an emergency. Mr. Hardy, we had asked any council members who might have questions, has there been any unresolved or unanswered questions that you've received?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay, questions or comments from the committee? All right, would anyone entertain a motion to suspend rules? Motion in a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving into new legislation here. Okay, we have an ordinance approving the agreements between the Fraternal Order of Police, Akron Lodge Seven, Local 1360, Ohio Council Eight of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Bargaining Units, and the City of Akron regarding adjustments in employee compensation, providing for these adjustments and compensation to apply to all employees in the non-bargaining management and unclassified job classes as well. All in furtherance of the mayor's commitment to attract and retain qualified employees and provide appropriate wages increases commensurate with improved employee productivity and efficiency, and changes in the cost of living while economically utilizing taxpayer dollars to provide vital quality services to the citizens of the city of Akron and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Chairman. Deputy Mayor Briggs will be here next week to provide a full presentation to council on the two pieces that were introduced. We were initially planning to do a presentation this week, but representation from the FOP was unavailable to be here this week, and they would like to be here when we presented. So, we're putting it before yous, for you guys to review. You can have questions next week, but Deputy Mayor Briggs will be here to give you guys a full presentation along with finance on these two pieces next week, if that's pleased as the committee.
Questions, comments?
The other piece we just suspended, the previous piece, or just...
No, no, so the previous piece was the omnibus...
We okayed that.
Correct, yes.
One of the two pieces you...
There are two new pieces in budget this week. There's one on wages and one on benefits. Correct. Those go together, those together are the union. Sorry, that was confusing.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Imobian?
Uh, yes. I'm looking at the number two piece. This is the agreement between the FOP and the city of Akron. Is this what this, this is a proposal?
So, yes, there's the two, are you talking about the...
Number two.
They both, they go together, so one relates to wages, and one relates particularly, specifically to healthcare benefits.
And that's the...
But together, they are ratifying agreements between the city and FOP, and the city and AFSMI. There are obviously two other unions, CSPA and the FIRE Union, and those agreements will be coming before council as they're finalized between the city and the unions. But we have reached final agreement between the city, the FOP, and the city and AFSMI on these issues, so they're ready for council's review. But again, FOP wanted to be present, to be part of that, so we were going to wait a week respectfully to allow them to provide their comment as well.
Okay. The FOP agreement that I have in front of me, which is number two, which is the one that I think we have that you address, Mr. Chair, does this have a healthcare component to it? I see the wages, but I don't see the healthcare unless I'm missing something.
Yeah, they're separate pieces. So, piece two deals with wages, piece three deals with healthcare.
Oh, they're just separate that way, okay. But this addresses FOP and the first union as well?
Yes, so it's FOP, AFSMI, management, non-bargaining, and unclassified employees.
So, you've also included in here, as I see it, the non-bargaining group. So, do you normally do that before you bring in all of your bargaining groups' agreements?
I wish Deputy Mayor Briggs was still here. I don't think he expected us to be taking questions today, but... I don't think he expected us to be taking questions today, but it, previously, they have been done separately. Traditionally, when possible, we do them all together, but again, we, we've reached final agreement with the FOP and with AFSMI. We have not yet reached final agreement with CSPA and the fire union. Deputy Mayor Brown felt it was not fair to hold up finalizing the agreements with those two unions before all four unions could come before us. And also, there actually are some statutory requirements that we act quickly once final agreement has been reached between the city and the unions, so...
Yeah, I mean, if you get any questions you can't answer, just said that you would prefer to delay it or something.
I mean, I can answer them, I just know that I'm answering them on behalf of Deputy Mayor Briggs.
Yeah, okay.
So, first...
Thank you.
I have a motion for, that they just, I, this item...
That's fine.
Let me turn your mic on.
I apologize. I would like to make a motion to have this item referred.
Is there a second?
Sec, I, I have second.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Briggs is here, is he supposed to...
Who's, who is this deputy break?
Deputy Mayor Briggs, Randy Briggs.
Oh, Briggs. I thought you said break. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the name correctly, but he's here now, so should we...
I answered a many names, so...
I heard break, and I'm trying to figure out who this new person was, but I didn't hear the Briggs, I'm sorry.
Probably mumbling, no problem.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Close?
Excuse me, we're deferring something...
We're referring this to next week.
Based on Deputy Briggs being here.
Well, a motion, a motion and a second had made.
Yeah, I seconded it because he wasn't here. He was walking in the door at the time. I mean, we can defer if you want, but I thought since, since his presence is here, I didn't know if he wanted to do anything.
Can I hear...
I think, I thought I heard Ms. Nish say that...
Again, the idea was that the FOP was unable to be here today. That's why we were asking respectfully if the committee would take time for a week.
I, I, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
That's fine.
That's fine. Go ahead.
All right, we'll refer that item to next week. Next ordinance is an ordinance amending and/or supplementing ordinance number 11-2011 and ordinance number 17-2016, approving the agreements between the Fraternal Order of Police, Akron Lodge Number Seven, Local Number 1360, Ohio Council Eight of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Bargaining Units, and the City of Akron regarding changes in healthcare benefits, providing for these changes to apply to the healthcare benefits for all eligible employees in the non-bargaining management and unclassified job classes, all in furtherance of the mayor's commitment to attract and retain qualified employees and ensure a stable and productive workforce while implementing policies that will save taxpayer dollars by providing competitive and fair health benefits for eligible employees, authorizing the Director of Finance to fund these benefits, and declaring an emergency.
I would just say the same reasoning, we're respectfully requesting a week's time so that members from our, our union leadership can be present next week.
Motion to defer?
Motion to refer?
Aye.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
They will refer this to a regular agenda. Finally, an ordinance levying special assessments and determining to proceed with public improvements and public services to the downtown Akron Special Improvement District in accordance with ordinance number 2-2019, which approved the downtown Akron Special Improvement District and the plan for services to be, be provided by the downtown Akron Special Improvement District Incorporated, all when and where necessary, all together with the necessary appurtenances thereto, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Fricker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, this is the third and final piece dealing with the, the Special Improvement District for downtown. We have previously passed the five-year plan and then also the resolution of necessity. This piece allows us to actually levy the assessments and bill the property owners for, for the services provided by the downtown Akron Partnership. So, we will collect the assessments and then pass those through to downtown Akron Partnership. We do have Kimberly Beckett here, if there's any questions about the SID. We did present a, a full presentation when we submitted the five-year plan. Just a quick recap, there's about 500 parcels in the downtown SID. We'll be levying about $850,000 of assessments each year.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Consent would be...
Okay, motion for consent?
So, move.
A second? A second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll place this on the consensus.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and we are adjourned.